It's just for the court facility parking lot. So, happy to answer any questions as far as the cost associated with it. The total cost for this is roughly $60,000. We're asking the county commission to consider a gift of 20,000 or just a straight payment for our expenses for that.
Melissa, you start with what you got questions?
Um, I don't, I don't know where to start. Pass on me right now.
Well, we'll start with more. I always like to start with the right hand here. More, you got the, you know, any questions on?
We talked last night. We're, we're gonna be facing some expenses for those cameras. We talked about that last time and other things that we might be having to do. And I think there was even some questions, illegal questions as to whether we could donate a gift like this.
Right, we can't, we can't make a charitable contribution, so we have to get something in return. Now, what, as I recall, this project, it was originally a project that we had. We have an agreement with the city of Trenton. So, I mean, whatever we do, I would suggest the board would go to the city of Trenton. They can do, you know, if we want to do that, do an agreement. But that was, that was a legal concern about creating a, making a charitable contribution. We really can't do that.
Well, it was, it was a, actually a city project. We just, we just donated, or actually didn't donate. We gave them permission to use the land, you know, as our, as part of it, so, yeah. Mr. Hartland?
Y'all had engineering done on this prior to starting the project. When you come to this, y'all, it was a project that y'all wanted to do and y'all just wanted us to give you an easement at the time. The gutters was there in the beginning. You, you're talking that it's an erosion problem, which we could go in and fix that erosion problem if we're not doing the sidewalk with riffraff. So, you're, something we could fix for a few thousand dollars without having the sidewalk there, you're only wanting 60, 70,000.
No, no, we're, we're just wanting 20.
You're wanting, yeah, but you're saying that problem's gonna be a cost to you about 60 or 70,000.
It'll be 60 based on current cost of piping, yes.
And like I said before, when y'all started this, this was y'all's project. So, I still don't feel comfortable putting taxpayers' money, even though it is art money, into the project. My next question is, since we're at that, have we done anything with the DOT about your crosswalk from that sidewalk getting across the road where that is gonna be coming out at?
Yeah, we're working with the city directly with DOT.
You're applying for the permits and are they gonna, where are, where are they gonna be, y'all are doing it through, okay. That was, that was my main concern, is that crosswalk and DOT and making sure they're gonna let us?
Yeah, to slow down the traffic, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you looking at a, similar to, kind of called like a flashing light or just a, is that?
That would be, that would be best case scenario. We would love to see that, yes, to slow down the traffic and to help. What, what we wanna do is garner walking community and pedestrian health. So, if that's plausible with DOT, we would love to push for that.
Robert?
Well, I'm, I think we already explored what Phillip was just talking about. I mean, that, it seemed to me like riffraff on that would look good on that bank and I don't think it would cost nearly the 68,000 total for to do all that.
You're talking about riffraff instead of a pedestrian path?
Instead of running, I mean, the water's been running out since the courthouse was built. You know, it's not a new problem. It just did not erode, I mean, it's eroded some, obviously. But, and I'm not a construction person to start with, but it seemed to me like if that could be done, it would be worth looking into, the, the price of versus. And the other thing, as far as even the ARP money and unfortunately Don is, he'll himself this month and not here, we've got to look at what we have already earmarked from the ARP money, because I think we did, the fire departments, that was quite a big chunk, the HVAC in the old courthouse.
Right, right.
So, I wouldn't be willing to agree to anything tonight until we say where we're standing on, you know, what's already, because those are already earmarked, whether the money's been spent or not, that's what we had to do.
And nothing official, but previously Don had said that there was money available for this and that. And to go back to, to your question regarding engineering, yes, we had engineering done by CTI early on in this. And riffraff was looked at, but it was not a viable option for longevity, whether there's a creek trail or not.
Right.
It was because of the amount of water and the amount of pressure that's coming behind there, that was one of the initial thoughts, was that we could get by with that. But the engineers, after coming back, doing multiple site visits, taking soil samples, the riffraff option was just not on the table. And we, we wish it was, but it, it just wasn't to, to resolve this problem.
These pipes are going into, aren't they going into the water garden? Isn't that where?
So, this piping will actually go onto existing draining system and then we will additionally have a rain garden beyond just this.
Beyond that.
Yeah, so we're just asking for money for the piping, for the, the erosion problem, simply on the court facility property. Well, in addition to this, for the protection of the creek and for the sustainability of this trail in the perpetuity, we're gonna be doing a rain garden. There, there really was that much erosion. Hey, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer either. I would have loved for it not to have been this way. But when we went to CTI, these are engineers that are, they're also working on paving of the Jenkins Park parking lot. They do projects like this all over. And we had originally gone to Barge, then moved to CTI. So, I promise you, we spent years doing due diligence on this. Was, this was not last minute by any stretch of the imagination for us.
Well, I went out and when I looked at it, I, yeah, I just didn't quite, so, because the, the path is right there. So, you're gonna take the water from, from the building and go into a pipe and then that goes?
The pipe will be, think of it like a header pipe. So, those, let's just call them those eight downspouts will be coming this way. There'll be a header pipe that will connect to all of them. They'll catch all of that water and take it east and then drop down into the existing drainage system for the city of Trenton.
It'll run full length of the courthouse. It'll run, it'll run, you know, parallel with the courthouse on the back and each pipe will hit it, you know, that's what.
There's a, yeah, there's a great deal of, of water, because you just, you've got...
I could tell that, plus you're still gonna have some, some flow. Is there any worries about that path being wet there all the time or?
Uh, no, we're raising it and we're, we're filling it with, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so what you see there is not gonna be the, the level of the path.
It'll be higher, okay. That makes sense now, okay.
And again, the rain garden is an additional erosion control measure, but it's not what we would use money. If the, if the board were to give us money for this project, we would restrict it to this property and for specifically that piping. And we're happy to give receipts and, you know, if y'all decide to do it, you could give it directly to the, to the contractor.
Okay.
Any other question?
Was this a, a bid that's been put out and you know this piping is $40,000 or?
Yes, sir.
So, you have multiple bids on it?
Have you received, is, is this what's on your lowest bid or do you have the bid?
Yeah, and in fact, the, the contractor has already purchased the piping because there was fear that the price was going to go up.
Okay, so it's already purchased?
It's already purchased, yeah, yeah.
That's why it's a definite number?
Mm-hmm, yeah. It was, it was getting very tenuous in June, July for just how the prices were going skyrocket. So, the decision made to go ahead and purchase.
Okay. Who did Don, who did Don tell that the, that the money, the ARP money was there? Did you talk to him?
He just talked to me in a, in a conversation and it was, it was in June. So, this was, you know, quite a while ago.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it. We'll talk, we'll talk to him and see, okay? All right, all right, thank you.
Oh, Jameson?
Yes, sir.
I wanna, I wanna give, I think I spoke with, did you call me the other day? I wanna give y'all one of these and the reason I'm giving it to you is I did talk to her. This was a constitutional amendment that we voted in the state of Georgia in 2018. I just wanna make sure y'all are aware of that, that granting program.
Oh, great, thank you.
Because it's exactly what y'all are doing here. It's money that's taken taxing of sporting goods to come back to the state, do exactly what y'all are, this kinda thing.
Thank you, thank you.
And even what we're perhaps looking at on a part, on a piece of county property.
Yeah.
To preserve walking trails. I mean, it's a whole ball of wax and they want people to apply for it. Because just to be honest with you, if you read that letter, the state has taken it and been giving it to things like state parks.
Right.
Because nobody was asking for that money.
No, that's good. We ain't afraid to ask.
And state parks have funding, have other ways of funding. So, that, I want you to have that and, you know, be able in the future to look at it and see if there's something, you don't get it till you ask, that's for sure.
That's right. Well, and just one last comment. Look, the burden that you guys have, we know that y'all want what we want with thriving communities and having walking trails like this, we get it. We exist so that we can help be in partnership to that and go out and get private funds to help those in. Because y'all are burdened with, with a heavy load when it comes to, to spending taxpayer dollars. That's why this was not what we wanted to do initially and that's why the request is, is a small percentage in compared to, to the actual cost. So, thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, move down to six B. This is a nine, eight nine one one voice recorder, Alex.
Yes, we're looking to update the current recording system that record, records all the nine one one lines that come into the center, all the radio traffic on all four radio consoles and channels that come through. We've had this system, the same brand since I started employment here in 2005. It was a different name or sound communications has been involved with that and it had moved to the company of Variant. And where this will be our third upgrade since I've been here. Again, it goes back to hardware restrictions, software restrictions of Microsoft and newer technology as text to nine one one, next gen nine one one, video to nine one one that's coming. And with us currently going out, we had a single source letter, again, I was working with Don and Rebecca on this, that we currently have 40 individual license back when we had all analog circuits, as we have stated when we had moved to the new Mitel phone system and moved over to the SIP type service with Trent telephone, which saved us on long distance and the savings that we worked about in our budget. This system will not record those types of encryption SIP. So, and before, we recorded certain lines in the jail, sheriff's office, investigations, all the nine one one phones, and we hadn't been able to do that for several months due to we get harassing calls, as we all know that we were hit with the group, from the courthouse group and things like that. And so, there's certain extensions throughout the, the 24/7 offices we try to record in case something happens. You'd be surprised how many nine one one calls come into the 4111 or to the three two three three number that rings the sheriff's office or our non-emergency line. I took two domestics last week on a non-emergency line and when I worked last Wednesday and Thursday on 12-hour shifts, it's just 4111. It's an old number that used to be on patrol cars years ago. So, with these licenses, if we were to go out and bid this and start, so the price was $49,508.41 with our current license and being with this company so long, they're giving us the license and the discount of 20, for 29,456.45. Now, again, further on into, it gets into the pricing of the, of the hardware, the recorder, the platforms of the server, consolidated server, the maintenance for the first year, services and configurations, if we have any trouble from nine to five or eight to five Monday through Friday and any training needed to get us with this. And one of the last sheets there is if we continue any of the optional expansion enhancements or upgrade is around 20, that's around $3,500 if we wanted to extend any of those on maintenance services, which that would be determined in the 24 budget if we needed to do that. These systems have been good and I've never have had that service, what services we have had, it's been cheaper for us just to pay the time and material, because these things are pretty robust and we can work most of the issues out with the Windows updates and stuff. So, as discussed, when we were bringing this up, talking to our accountant and, I mean, with Don and Rebecca, they felt qualified, this was qualified with some of the art funding. So, we're presenting that to get this moving.
So, the total you're asking for?
Twenty-nine, four fifty-six.
Twenty-nine, four fifty-six, forty-five. Come on, stop, you got?
And is that for just a one-year warranty or is that for?
It comes with a one-year with this. If we want additional year warranties, that would be around the three, $3,500 a year. That's the fourth page, I believe, into the pricing. But it comes with one year. Once it sets in and they hand it to us and we're qualified with, we're current, that is recording what we want, the one year starts the day we sign off on the project.
Would you recommend the extended warranty? I would from dealing with what I want.
Well, I would, like I said, I haven't used it before with other services. It's, it's been what problems we have had, it's just come out our regular maintenance that we have for unexpected items. I feel it's unnecessary. It's a pretty good bit of chunk of money.
Okay, well, I'm good with it.
I mean, well, we'll get one year for the new stuff and we'll wear it out, but, you know, that'll be sometime in mid 24 probably. This probably won't happen till another two, three months probably, things are so far behind.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Torline?
What's the life expectancy on this gonna be?
Well, we're, again, it's back on Microsoft and that. We're probably get at least six, six years or so.
Six, seven years old?
Almost eight years old now. It's right on our old Windows NT platform. So, if we did have any, the issue is it won't talk with the newer current Mitels, because of the new SIP encryption that the phones have, is us, again, saving that big funding and cutting our bill, like in, I don't remember, it was almost in half or more with our monthly bill moving to this type service.
Right.
So, this will talk to it? Yes, okay.
We have to have the newer, because the language when stuff that we upgrade again, it's server stuff, as stuff moves and changes, the older stuff won't. And this don't sit on any network or available and it kinda stands alone, because, you know, we're, we're pulling recordings constantly for attorneys, recs, especially when court comes on, we'll have 50-plus recordings we need to pull. So, sometimes it takes Daniel and Thomas and me both to pull recordings to get ready for court, because a lot of them wait till the last minute and open these things pretty quick, so. But right now, again, we cannot record the business phones, our day-to-day business Mitel phones throughout our whole facilities, because it's all hearted back there and it's networked out and it don't, it won't speak the language. We've tried and tried and tried and it's the software. Because Mitel, again, we upgraded with it, that language it talks, this recorder won't grab it.
Well, I'm, I'm good with it, but I'm like Robert, I'd like to know, I'd just like to make sure that we've not earmarked our money yet on the art part, if we can use it.
Yeah, and I think it hasn't, that's why I was, I can't, this has been on the book.
Well, I wouldn't believe for many that we have to, you know, but when, when we're doing it month after month with what we did with our department and HVAC, at some point we've gotta look at that before we can.
Well, that's why I didn't put it on there till Don told me to put, ask, put it on there. It's been in here, well, this was actually on last splashed and the next thing we're bringing up is the actual phone system that answer nine one one. We can't answer text or video and we got a system that's been here since oh six.
And I know this not directed at you or anybody else.
I didn't do it.
We get held, counties do, cities do, whatever. You get held hostage by these places, because five years ago, you do this new system and then five years later, well, we gotta have this system now. It's kinda like medicine.
Well, it's the same way.
Take this medicine, because you're taking that medicine, because now we can't use, and that's not you.
We can't help it. We can't help these Microsoft products. We'll be coming to you again on this new splashed in three more years to do the same thing.
That's what I'm saying, it's just, but there's nothing, there's nothing anybody can do about it, because they keep changing the technology and...
I've been handing these three things to Don for five years and this is when he said put it on, so.
And you have, we have the capability right now with the computers and different things to use all of this.
This is all new server, this is a new server and system and software.
So, it's a, the whole thing is new and it'll work on for however long we think that'll be?
It will till we can't no more, that's what we fight. Well, you can see, this stuff's not running Monday through Friday, it's running 24/7, 365.
But there are liabilities to the, like you're talking about the courts and whatever, if we can't bring something back, can't...
Well, recordings, yes. We're, we are liable to pull every recording that runs through that P S A, that Public Safety Anthem. Only thing I can record right now is the radios and the nine one one phones, because they're analog. The, the radios are actually digital that creates an analog cord that we've had to work around from since 2008 to get those. We have one console that scans about seven channels so we can get it. We don't have physical old analog radios that we plug into like we used to. We don't have analog phones. We have SIP phone service that runs every office, Billy's office, the, down at the parks. We've, that's how we've been saving this money. We're cutting this stuff off and using our internal network that we've had and pushing it, the 4H building, now the transfer station. We've got fiber to all these things and we're saving that funding, so we're not having to pay these high-dollar monthly bills.
So, they're giving you a $40,000 system for $29,000?
We've been a longtime customer with this company. We currently own the license, they're not charging us for a new license.
Well, on your way back to your seat, slip him the other $20,000 you're saving and we're all good, isn't it?
I understand. But we're to a point where, like I said, the six five seven 4111, the six five seven three two three three, that's the 24/7 hour numbers in the jail, we haven't been able to record since our Mitel update. And we take emergency calls on that. Like I said, I took two domestic calls last week that called on 4111. And it's hard when you can't, you know, sometimes we, when you hear something and the phone hangs up, you gotta do what we call an instant recall, hear what they said and see what's going on.
But you can't, that's the kind you can't record at all, really.
Our phones are, if you think the phones in the front, every office in here is on Mitel, all buildings that county touches and owns is on Mitel now.
According to Don, there is money available for this project and has been set aside to recommend that for communication.
Yeah, I don't, it's not put on until y'all say, I guess, is Ryan or he.
Any more questions? Everybody find one? Okay. Put it on consent agenda. Thank you, Alex. Okay, move down to number seven. We have some people here from Aaron Council Drive tonight and y'all can keep your seat there until this, we need to ask you a question about this. This is a road that been almost a year now, just, I think it's, is it 17th? Is that one of these, is that 27th? The road will be of this month and we'll take our final look at it. Bill and I went over and looked at it again the other day, but, and, and our policy, you know, they brought it up to standard, paving paid for it and all, and we'll be taking it over, you know, providing it, that Billy accepts it and it does look great and it really looks good. And we want to head tonight, tentatively to go ahead, if y'all agree to, and adopt taking it over. That way, we won't have to wait till October, we can go and put the signage up after, you know, after we do that, after that, that date anyway. You got any questions on the more?
No.
Our council?
I think y'all checked it when they first done it and...
Yeah, it went to a lot. They, they took them about a year or so to get everybody, it's a long drawn-out thing as far as the rideaways go. Robin's been involved in, of course, you know, through all the deed work and all that stuff, so we went right down the line with it, you know. You got anything on it, Phil?
Who paved it?
It was weeks, weeks.
Wait, did y'all? When they, when they paved it, did they take it back to the, the pug base and they removed the existing asphalt that was there?
Okay. They got a hundred plus percent compaction on it. It's, it's a good base, it's been there for a while, yeah. That road will be there for a long time, I mean, yeah.
No, if, if Billy expected, what did y'all put down, two inch, two and a half inch? Do you remember?
It was, yeah, it was, it was actually two, two and a... It, yeah, it was, it was actually two, two and an inch and a half.
So you, okay, so you put an inch and a half of top in then?
Some places it's like eight inches.
Well, simply, when they, when they did, they went in, you know, they went in first and put the boundary in and, you know, and brought it and leveled it and then they came back. They didn't, I know what they're doing, they done it.
Oh, yeah, weeks paved mine when I had mine done.
Yeah. Robert, you got?
I'm good with it.
The only thing I got, I can't, that's fastest year I've ever spent in my life. I know they've been working on it for, what, two years?
Two years.
Yeah. But, yeah, I'm good with it pending the final inspection.
Yeah. Ms. Bradley?
Yeah, I did, I did my research too, so I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, good enough. Okay, let's put that on consent agenda. Okay, appreciate y'all being here tonight.
I'd like to say that we sure appreciate the gratitude of the people we've been involved with, with the county. They have helped us a lot just to direct us in the way we needed to go, so we did this done. And especially Ted, Robert Goff, Robert Rogers, and to Billy Massingale.
What did, how much, what was the total cost they tell, I actually wondered, what do you find?
A hundred and sixty-nine, right at a hundred and seventy dollars.
That's what I was thinking.
Just a few dollars short of that.
What is the distance?
Almost a mile, approximately.
Wow.
Did they curb it because it just, you got?
You got twenty-one foot. Yeah, I got a foot, yeah.
In case anybody wonder, that was private money from the landowners, that was no, no county money whatsoever spent on it. They, they went about it the way it has to be done to be all maintained and then.
Turned, turned back to the government, yeah.
We thank y'all for that.
Appreciate it, appreciate y'all. All right, let's move down to number eight, Mr. Jamie Blevins. I don't know if he's.
He is not here tonight, but there is a presentation in there for you to see with new photos of the courthouse, which can also be seen, or the courthouse renovations, which can also be seen online at Assembly.
Okay, all right. Move down to number nine, Ms. Paula Duvalle, this is Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts, this is a yearly sales ratio study report.
That's right. Yes, this is our yearly report we get from the Department of Audits, which just to give a basic explanation, Department of Audits is a totally separate entity from Department of Revenue. We work for Department of Revenue, you know, we use Department of Revenue regulations and statutes, and then the Department of Audits comes in every year to kind of give their opinion, I guess, of, but it's very important because if some numbers in here aren't as they should be, it can come against the county, and, and we do have some issues this year, which we will talk about as we go along. So if you turn to the third page, if you have a copy of it, it looks like this right here. It's going to have your class, your sample numbers, and then your median, COD and PRD. Now, the important numbers are the median, which the median just basically tells the county how well our values are in line with what is actually sold. Georgia tax is at forty percent, so you want that number to be as close to point four oh as possible. Department of Revenue does give a leeway of point three six to point four two. So you'll see that first number in all classes of property, residential, agricultural, commercial and industrial, our median is at thirty-seven point oh five, passing, but not as good as we would like for it to be. But, you know, that's neither here or there. Then we're going to move over to the COD, that's your coefficient of dispersion, that measures uniformity. For residential properties, that number should not be above a point one five, anything that's non-homestead property should not be above a point two oh. So you'll see on our residential COD, we're at a one-seven. So per Department of Revenue standards, we are out of compliance on the COD. The other classes, agricultural, commercial and industrial, they're okay. Your PRD, that measures bias, progressivity, regressivity, that number should be between a point nine eight and a one point one oh. So we're okay on our PRD, a little high, higher than we'd like, but, but it's, it's a passing number. So just to get back to the COD, and to give a brief explanation of why we have an issue with this. Every year, you know, before we send out assessment notices, we do internal studies, we do internal mark, we do thousands of these ratio analysis to, to finally get to, you know, finding out if there is a problem, okay, if there is a problem, what is that problem, what needs to change, what needs to be fixed. So, you know, we, we go through massive amounts of studies and, you know, to get our internal numbers in compliance with Department of Revenue standards. So then you have this Department of Audits that comes in, and the problem is beginning to happen because we, per Department of Revenue standards, are required to use previous year's sales to get the current year's digest numbers. So for the 2022 digest, we used 2021 sales, January through December. Well, the Department of Revenue comes in, they use current year's sales. So for our 2021 audit study, they used 2021 sales that we haven't even caught up to yet. We, we haven't even been made aware, you know, it's sometime in between that year and before we catch it, there could be a remodel on a house that we didn't know yet, we hadn't got to it yet. But they picked it up and it's sold, so of course it sold for, you know, quite a bit more money than we've got, because we don't have that remodel yet. So because of that, and this, this started, it didn't used to be that way, they, we, everybody used the same information. But about four or five years ago, the Department of Audits changed how they do their study. So as the years are going, it, it's, it's beginning to be a problem where we just can't keep up. And a lot of counties are having this problem this year. I actually went to a meeting last week with several counties that did not pass their audit report, but internal numbers were great. So there's a problem somewhere. So a lot of the counties, not just us, I'm requesting that we appeal this, this report. We want to know the time adjustment that they use, because they're supposed to use a time adjustment, because they're using a different pool of sales. So, you know, we want to see what numbers they use, what time adjustments they used. So, you know, I am requesting that the commission, because the county governing authority is the entity that has to appeal this audit report. So I would like the board, I would, I am asking the board to appeal this audit report so that we can hopefully get to the, to the bottom of the issue here and hopefully get some corrections made. I have been talking to my consultants who have been coming in and helping us get our digest ready, and, you know, they've been working with me, working with all these other counties. So, you know, we're all coming together and getting some good information, some good numbers to be able to present in our appeal to the Department of Audits, so hopefully we can have some success. And another reason that this one is, could be a problem for the county, every three years, we also are audited by Department of Revenue. We have what's called our digest review. And 2021 was our digest review year. So if your audit report on your digest review year is out of compliance, the county is actually put under a consent order. And under that consent order, within the next cycle that we have our digest review year, if whatever the issue was has not been fixed at that time, then the county can incur penalties. So we definitely want to make sure that.
How many years ago? We went through this, we went, you know, it's been, what, six years ago, seven?
About six or seven years ago, it was. But, you know, it was easily fixed, you know, it was something that was.
That's right, it was fixed, but.
But it's come to the point now where something's going to have to change. Because really, the biggest issue is to get a January first number, you know, they went all the way to September of 2021 to get a January 2021 value. So something's just not working. So I am requesting that we appeal this report, and I, I do have a letter that I've given to Robin, that's been typed up, that would have to be signed tonight so that we can get that, we have till September the fourth, so I'll get that in the mail tomorrow if, if the board approves that.
This is a Department of Revenue, something between not coming out, are there other counties? Do you know any other counties that's having a like problem?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Last week, I think there was, I didn't actually go, I was on Zoom, but there was probably, I think out of a hundred and fifty-nine counties, anywhere between fifty and sixty also had the same issue. So it's becoming a big issue. So, you know, a lot of counties are kind of thinking, you know, something, it's, it's just not working out right. So hopefully with everybody, all the counties coming together, getting the good information that we can get, maybe we'll have some success and, and we can get this tweaked a little bit to where it should be.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions, Phil?
Mine on this, based what you're saying is you're doing, we're doing one audit last year and they're coming in doing their audit this year.
They audit every year.
Yeah, but I mean, you're, we're behind gaps about a twelve-month period.
That is correct. Based on the information they use to get their numbers.
So they're using up-to-date information.
That is correct. That is correct.
There's been a lot of change.
We hope to kind of come to an agreement, you know, if we could use, you know, like October, November, December of one year, and then January, February, March of the next year, you know, if we could all come together and do that, that would, you know, be great. Because it would be good for us too, because that, that's closer to your January first date. Because even us using January first 2020 to get a January first 2021, you know, that could, there could be some issues there too. So hopefully, maybe we can get some, some, some issues corrected.
Okay. Any more questions? Melissa, you got any questions or?
I don't know, do you think some, and this is just, some of it is just the difference in, in the values right now of the times, yeah?
Oh, absolutely. And just, you know, from one year to the next, the way sales are just continuing to increase, to, to do a whole other year ahead of us.
Well, there's probably those different areas that are kind of the same as us.
Correct.
But then there's the bigger ones, yeah, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Lamar has.
The way the inflation's changed this past year, I can see why it would be so much trouble for you.
Right, right.
And those fines are huge for the county if we don't meet the uniformity standards. So you wonder why we assess your property every year. The state makes sure that we keep everybody as uniform as possible.
And this would be different if we weren't doing our job, you know, from year to year, if we were slacking, you know, and not really paying attention, I could understand, but, but we do our job, you know, we work hard to make sure it's right.
That program now, right, that does it every year, that, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we, I was not very happy, but certainly, hopefully, we can get some, some issues resolved.
All right, thank you, Paul.
So Paul, are you asking the, the board to authorize the appeal, is that right?
Yeah, they're going to have to approve for us to appeal this.
Everybody fine with putting on consent agenda?
Yes, I'm going to appeal it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Let her do her job.
Definitely. All right, move down to number ten. This is our contribution agreement between the GACD and the Dade County Board of Commissioners, and what that is, is Stephen Bonovich, which is our USDA person in the back, they go, he actually, it's just to help fund his department, you can explain more there back on nine if you want to read it. This is a contract that we've reviewed several times, but, y'all got any questions on it? I don't think we've had time to look at it. Most of you are familiar, we've probably worked with him before, but.
Stephen does a good job for our county.
He does, he does a good job, yeah. You got any questions, Philip, on it?
I don't.
All right, let's put that on the consent agenda. All right, let's move down to, let me write this down, number eleven, resolution R-51-22, this is amendment number one to the FY 2022 budget. Carrie, thank Don, of course, Don and Rebecca both have COVID, which is our two key CFO people, and.
They do.
She's been working with them, Carrie has, and so she's going to do her best to go over this.
I am. So this budget amendment is something that happens usually this time every year, we have to wait sixty days for any accounts payable or receivables that come in from the prior year, so we leave this open and the budget open, or sorry, we leave the budget open for about, for sixty days, as the state law requires, and the following amendment reflects those items, which you can see on page two of three. The delta total difference is one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. After the audit is over in December, we may have another budget amendment for the physical year, but this is all normal procedure at this point in time.
You understand that?
Yes, sir, I do. We've done it every, every year.
You know, and we may have another one or two between now and the end of the year, but, everybody fine with it?
Yes.
On the consent agenda?
Okay.
Wouldn't place that on the consent agenda, okay? Y'all got anything else you want to add for adjourn the work session, and if y'all are okay, we'll, we'll just go right on into our meeting, you know?
Well, I want to clear up whether we are voting or not voting.
No, we're not, we can't vote.
For, I mean, for.
We have, we, we, the consent agenda will.
Well, it'll be put on to the consent agenda for.
If we agree to put it on.
For the trail, did.
No, we're just, we need to look at that, we need to look.
Okay, yeah, I just want to, I wasn't know, I wasn't sure what we.
Yeah.
Well, obviously, we have to talk with Robin too, because of how, how we're going to do it, if, if we do it, how we're going to do it.
That's correct, Rob, Robin, right? I mean, it's.
And Don says, Don says the funds are available, but it is up to the board if that, if you want to proceed forward.
Yeah, we still got to find out, Robin said you can't, we can't make a donation, it has to be, so we, we would have to work that out, so he would have to tell us in which way we could do that then, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just wasn't cleared.
By the way, too, they said that, I think we might have discussed this the last meeting, but Stephen, we did go and looked at sand and, and it does, it is, he said it was approved for the water garden or whatever, so it's a good thing, yeah.
Yes, can I ask a procedural question? What, what should our next steps be if it's not on the consent agenda, just forget my ignorance, what should our next steps be?
The next step is wait until we give you an answer.
Okay, so that's, oh, that's correct, that's correct. So y'all are going to, so basically, the request of this name.
Not a sample to do, yeah.
Sure, color in consideration, and you will get back in touch with us.
With you, yeah.
Okay. Paul's in the figure.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else y'all want? Y'all fine with this, I'll go in and adjourn, we're going, and.
Short break.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a short break in between, I'll go ahead and, and we'll adjourn our work session, we'll take about five minutes here and then we'll, we'll start the meeting, okay? All right. All right. Lord, we know that there's, this is the time of year for flooding, hurricanes beginning to crop up. We don't know what's gonna come tomorrow, but we just pray, Lord, that you would help us to be able to stand that if it comes our way and when it's not in our own way, Lord, that we pray for those and we feel for those and do what we can for those who are going through it right now. So Father, just bless the night and let, let us handle the business of this community in this county. And Lord, we give you the praise for it all. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners. It takes place at the same time on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice of this meeting was given to our legal organ in Dade County and has been posted in the hallway. Uh, this time I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowry.
Here.
Mr. Hartline.
Present.
Mr. Goff.
Here.
And Ms. Bradford.
Here.
And Chair, Mr. President. Thank you. Okay. Got anybody who wants to come up and talk to us tonight? Give you, have five minutes here.
Fagan.
Come on.
Yep.
Just tell us who you are and.
Jerry Fagan.
Jerry Fagan.
Fagan, F-A-G-A.
Fagan.
Uh, what I'm here about is, uh, the maintenance of roads in the county. There was a few short years ago, Debbie Johnson had inquired for somebody to come down and look at the, the condition of Luke Lane.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe Mr. Goff showed up. And there was a discussion about would the county maintain that road? It's my understanding they had not done anything to that road since. They boondoggle, uh, to preserve where all the people lost money. And the discussion was if Luke Lane was in fact a privately owned road and we owned it. When I bought property there, I bought several pieces of property. And of course Debbie was concerned because she had the wedding chapel back there. And the discussion at the time, I think Mr. Goff said, no mi, nobody may own this road. Who knows? I said, well, in that case, we could just put a gate up to keep the looky-loos out, cut down on the traffic. And then he informed me that we could not do that because there was an old cemetery there. In.
Well, you could put a gate up, but the cemetery would have to have, you know, anyone involved would have to have a key, you know, to.
Well, the question I have, when I started building Fagan Place twenty years ago, on the completion of my fifth house, uh, that got a nine-one-one address, the county informed me that it was now a county road, Fagan Drive. It's on Google. And they had told me at the time that they would maintain Fagan Drive. And I informed them, I said, I would rather assume the cost of maintaining Fagan.
I don't know who told you that, but they didn't know what you were talking about. Yeah. No. Fagan Drive is private. The only way you would ever took it, would ever, would ever be able to take Fagan Drive was if it was brought up to standard, just like these people tonight. It would have to be paved, you know, and tied in, and, and a fifty-foot right-of-way dedicated, you know, to the county. I don't, I don't know who told you that, but that's, you know.
Well, uh, I talked to the county road gentleman that was working on the road over, over on Creek Road at the time.
Yeah.
But since I, I built five houses in, on the lake and around the lake there in Johnson's Crook, there are now thirteen residences right there on Luke Lane.
Yeah.
Uh, proposal for additional construction. And I've got another construction going on a piece of property I bought back there off of Luke Lane. But the question is, is why the county, when I asked, uh, San Cindy, she said that Luke Lane wasn't a county road.
No.
The question I have is why would a house, a road with thirteen dwellings on it paying property taxes? Why it would not be, the maintenance of that road would not be assumed by the county. For the last six years I've been there, we have spent thousands of dollars just keeping that road drivable.
Yeah.
And it doesn't seem equitable, doesn't seem democratic to me that the only thing that we get from the county every year is a tax bill, property taxes. We're paying the same.
You get a lot more than that. You get fire protection, you get ambulance service, you get police protection. Those people right there is a good example. I'm glad, you know, you came to that because that, that, those people went together. There's, there's the laws in St. Georgia from what we, we have to go by to accept a county road. And they went right by the guidelines of it and we accepted it tonight. It took, it took a year. It had to sit there a year. It took them a year to get their, the deeds and all together and all. But all that property over there, all those roads are private roads. Just like my driveway is private. I like to have my, I like, you know, but you can't.
The gentleman that.
Don't matter if there's twenty houses on it, that, they went together. I think there was eighteen over there. They went together, they put their money together, they brought that road up to standards. They've deeded the fifty-foot right-of-way to us, you know, to the county, and it was a government road after the night, or after the, what was his, twenty-seventh? It'll be, it'll be a government maintained road forever. Yeah.
Well, the fact of the matter is, is the gentleman that was the overseer of the leveling of Newsome Gap Road, which comes into Luke Lane.
Mm, yeah.
Two years ago, they came in and leveled the road.
What road?
He informed me, he, Newsome Gap Road, which comes.
That's right, that's right. We'll put a label on it.
He informed me that the following year, there wasn't the same petroleum base in the leveling substance as would be on the finished blacktop. The following year, which was this year, no one showed up and the road, the, the leveling that is shy of petroleum base is now crumbling again and, and forming potholes and becoming basically not sensible driving. That is a county road. They have not done anything there. Now, we have spent money and I've spent money filling potholes on that road with quick rate. And I've kept my receipts. But why would the county not follow through on what they said they were gonna do? And he had sho, informed me for sure, and I know the gentleman, I met him before, I've seen him over on Creek Road. But he said to me, quote, "This is the worst stretch of county road that I know of in Dade County." And it has, it has maintained that phenomenal.
And it's the least traveled too, one of the least traveled and plus like stuff for friends get, but I don't know who, you may have been talking about Billy. I don't know, you know, Billy Massingill, you know?
We put a road counter up on Newsome Gap past Luke Lane. I've got it at my house. I can bring it in. We put a rope bell over there that counted the traffic that come down off the mountain. And in one week, there were eleven cars went across that road. Now, back in the spring, early this summer, I heard equipment up there maintaining that road that comes off of that mountain. And I think you said a few years ago, a lot of people use that road. No, they don't.
Mail carriers, mail mainly.
Why, why is it maintained if there's got?
You can't, we can't let it wash away. When it, when it cuts across it, you, we, we, we keep our crawl stains cleaned up. We keep our ditches cleaned, cleaned out. You can't let a road like that just wash away. Yeah.
So, but Newsome Gap Road coming in, you can't just let it get back full of potholes and not be.
No, they'll, they'll, they'll be over there next week looking and see what you're talking about. But as far as, you know, paving it, you know, actually getting it, you know, we, Billy, you know, he does, we do the best we can do with what we got, you know, own that out. And that's why we leveled it, is to get it, you know, decent, you know, going in there.
Well, that, that's hindsight and that's, you know, time passed and it's falling apart. Now, the question I have for you, you just told me that if we wanted to make Luke Lane a private drive, that we could gate it and then we would have if someone needed access to go to the cemetery, that we'd let, let them in because as I speak right now, there's an ad in the Dade County paper or something about the waterfall over there in Waterhill a few, a few months ago. There were people, a constant stream of people going back in there just looking at the waterfall. It's since been purchased.
Oh, yeah.
But there's still people coming in there and they look at the lakes and they're just driving around. And I guess you call it sightseeing. Some people call it looky-loos. I, whatever you call it, it's traffic that's occurring there that we, since we're spending, and I've got receipts and we've got the time and the machinery, we have spent thousands of dollars just keeping that road drivable. And I don't understand with the county budget. I understand they just build a, uh, a shelter down there in Rising Fawn for case of storm. And the only storm I know of that did any damage actually tore your house down thirty-two years ago. That's the last time I've heard of any storm doing such damage. What was the cost of building that shelter there?
Oh, the FEMA, the FEMA money, but, go ahead, Alex.
Federal funds from the actions we're receiving in twenty-two.
Wonderful. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that.
But you also got a thing that Luke Lane was stolen from the developers years ago before you purchased that. And that was private drive they put in or requested through the national authority. And you got several property owners that got that Luke Lane. There is.
I, I know that, but I'm saying, what I'm saying, can we gate the road and allow people that want?
Have to, for landowner, you know, you'd have to have everyone on that road sign it.
Everyone there pretty much.
That would actually legally sign it, you know, and there's a process. Robin, you're, you're the legal person because the county, you know, we don't have any say so, will you gate it, gate it or not? But there's, there is actually, um, guidelines to how you do it. And I know that everyone would have to sign it, correct? Uh, and, and, and it'd be recorded illegally, you know, and of course everyone would have to have access to the, you know, through the gate. Yeah.
Well, I, I, I read them, I read it. Several laws pertain to people that have produce or farms or dwellings and it's only private road. If they have to maintain that road, that they can deduct the cost of that maintenance from their property taxes.
I don't know. No.
Well, I've read it pretty extensively and it's pretty clear.
And in some states may be that, might be able to do that. Yeah.
Of course, I'm looking at Georgia law.
Mm.
And, uh, so if we're gonna be, have to assume the maintenance and the upkeep of that road at our out-of-pocket expense, then I think that, uh, it would be appropriate somehow that we get reimbursed or somehow or another. It just don't seem equitable to me. I know roads around here that have far fewer houses than Luke Lane and they have very nice roads. I don't understand that. Because some of those homes in there, as you well know, are not worth a hundred. They're in hundreds of thousands. The last property that was finished down there has come in at about two-point-one million. His rev, his taxes, I'm paying thousands of dollars. Together, we're all paying thousands of dollars. The only thing I'm saying is it just seems to me that it would be reasonable that the county would look at that and say, well, these people are paying the same mileage rate as somebody living right over here on the street with water, septic. We don't even have water there. We don't have a dumpster. If you want to haul your garbage and properly dispose of it, you've got to drive twenty-four miles here to this, they can't even put a dumpster down there.
Just like us.
So, and we don't, we have no water. We have to put in well. My wells cost me six thousand a piece. So the thing is, is I'm paying the same amount of taxes per square foot on property that somebody over here that has all the amenities of the county. That, that doesn't seem democratic to me.
Well, you chose though to live over there on that private road and that is a private road. There's no doubt. And it's not, it wouldn't be fair to anyone that, I mean, it's a law that we have to go by to accept the road. You know, and it's just, the, the, like I said, those people are a prime example. And, and that to us is a driveway. It's a driveway going to many houses. But, you know, that's just, that's just, that's a law. We can't, we couldn't do that, you know, years ago, back when probably the sole commissioner, Dan Hall, whatever. He could have, you know, laws were different. He could go then, look at that and he'd say, okay, if there's three or more houses, used to years ago, if there's three or more houses or five, he could take it over as a road and pave that thing and actually, and take it as a government-owned road. And that all changed in, I think it was eighty-five.
On ours, ninety-six is where you had to, the county quit paving roads. The developer had to do it. In nineteen, run around nineteen ninety-six, now somewhere near.
Yeah, it sounds like the developer didn't do their job. If there's no water or.
Well, it's went through a lot. They, they, it was, they went through, they bellyed it, you know, just like, I don't know, man. Yeah.
So you're, you're basically telling me that I should go ahead and get a petition and have all the
Oh, yeah.
private property owners in there make that a private road.
Well, it is a private road.
But, yeah.
But you could get a petition if you wanted to. What normally want in a case like that, when you got that many houses, especially if you got people, you say that's just got money like that, they put, they'll put a road fund together and they'll maintain that road unless they want to turn it over to a government. And then they bring it up, you know, bring, just like these people, they got tired of doing that over the years. So they brought it up to standards, paved the road and turned it over to the county. And from, from then on, it's a government-owned. Of course, they don't have any control with who goes in there. They can't gate it. That, that, if we want to go over and drive over at two o'clock in the morning, that's, it's a government-owned road.
A que, a question I ha, I have a question for you. I know that, that the people that bought the old furniture store out there did a lot of improvement. And I was informed of them that their taxes went up for improving the property. Is that true?
I don't know, I'm not assessed for that lady right there, because, you know, anytime you make improvements on a building or you build anything, you know, I'm sure that it does, you know, I mean, if you.
What I'm saying though, if, if, if we, uh, went ahead and did what you said, would that be considered taxable because it would be an improvement or should it just be our driveway and it don't raise our property taxes?
Well, if you turn it back over to the government, it wouldn't make any, you know, it wouldn't make any difference, you know? Because the government rode and you brought it up, you know, that's something, that would be totally up to the assessment and the houses that sell.
I put an asphalt, I put a concrete driveway at Fagan Place. I put two concrete on the grates. They raised my property taxes because I improved the property.
Yeah.
So, if we improve the driveway, that means we have to pay for it and then we have to pay taxes.
It makes you, makes your property worth more money, yeah, yeah, yeah. Any building I built over on my farm, I guarantee you, these people have been down there with a tape measure, they made my property taxes on it.
People told me I would waste my time and I feel like I have.
I hate it, but I appreciate you coming tonight, yeah.
See you.
All right, we'll move on. You might, you got any questions for Mr. Fagan, anybody, comment, okay? All right, uh, let's move down to Mr. Lamar Lowery. We'll start with you on your committee report.
All right, nine-one-one collectivity report. We had EMS at two hundred and thirteen calls. We had our fire departments at two hundred and eighty-seven calls. We had our police at eight hundred and nineteen, so our total calls for the month. And this is August was thirteen nineteen, thirteen hundred and nineteen calls. Now, we're going to do something a little, Alex has gave me some, a little bit better to go along with, kind of like Philip does with the electrical inspections. We had eight E-nine-one-one addresses added in the month of August. And for all, so far in twenty-twenty-two, we've had ninety-three. So, that kind of goes along with the electrical inspections. We are, Billy and his crew have been paving last week and this week on Murphy Hollow Road. They, they, it's probably going to be another couple of weeks before they can finish up what they were doing. The, the paper came apart and we got to get some parts ordered for it. And, but they'll be back on it as soon as they can get that done. Probably Billy told me today, probably a couple of weeks, so. And that's a heavily tabbed road. Now, you, you think of Murphy Hollow, don't have many people on it, but now when the freeway locks up, which is quite often now, the truckers got that GPS and it'll send them through Murphy's Hollow, I won't out that way. So, no, I, I passed a semi truck on Sligo Road doing that. So, it's different times we're living in. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Hotline.
All right, at the sports complex, right now we've got football, rec football and rec soccer going on. Uh, they've been practicing, they've started playing their games. We are going to host a slow pitch softball tournament on September the twenty-fourth. It's going to be the first national church soft, slow pitch tournament. It's sponsored by Riverside Baptist Church. Um, all church teams are invited to come, come play, join and play if you need to. And, uh, we've got a number, you can contact Stacy Stevens at the park. And then I'll have, um, Carrie to put up another number on our website that you can contact the guy that's actually putting on the tournament. We, uh, on our electrical inspections, like what he was saying, we had thirty electrical inspections in the month of August. Twenty of them was new construction. We done seven temporary for new construction. And then we've done one alterations and then two others. Maybe a weatherhead or something was bad and they were just changing after meeting based or something, but that, that's thirty electrical inspections in the month of August. So, that's why I'm saying like with our population, I know that, I feel, I still feel like we're way over sixteen thousand people in this county. Because we've had thirty, we probably averaged twenty new electrical inspections every month since the beginning of the year.
And most of them are houses, they're not barns and they're not, like you just.
I know what you're getting at because that, that, you know, that's true. I mean, it's, yeah. But we've, you know, we've, we've challenged it. I mean, as a Northwest Georgia region, we've actually filed, you know, petition to, with the other counties because we're not the only county. Right. It's something way off, you know? Yeah, that's, yeah, I just think we're off on that.
Okay. Your report, Mr. Golf?
Well, I was excited this morning when I looked at our splotch numbers because I think at that time Don had not, uh, updated, but in his defense and anybody's defense, this is the first day of the month. So, it's hard to get numbers in, banks have to close out and all that stuff for him to be able to put together the, uh, financial report. So, I thought we'd actually gone up again in splotch, but in, in reality, we had dropped fifteen thousand dollars over last month. But it's still a good month at three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars on our splotch. And that's the money that we talk about putting toward equipment, uh, police cars, you name it. That's where the money comes in, so it's good to see that still up. Uh, we'll talk just a little bit about, I went to Gwinnett County the other day with ACCG policy committees. And some things to watch for coming up in the legislature and I want you to be thinking about this one. One of them is the timber industry, which will eventually go over to anybody else hauling aggregate sand, you name it. They are requesting an increase in truck weight, uh, in the state of Georgia. Now, I think eighty-five percent of the roads in the state belong to counties. They don't belong to the state, they don't belong to the federal highway system, they belong to us, the taxpayer. Uh, some of our bridges may be made to handle more, uh, they may be, but a lot of our asphalt is not made for a lot of traffic on it now, like we have. Uh, but they're going to push that with the legislature. And I think what happened is the governor did give a variance during the pandemic to be able to haul more timber. And, uh, of course, you know, we still had a shortage in lumber for a long time, what lumber was there went. But that's a, another story for another day. But that's one you want to watch because that, that comes back directly on the county to maintain our roads. And, and the funny part is they really don't want them on state roads, they want them, uh, to, to stay on the county roads. And when you think about it, everything in this country eventually that is moved gets on a truck of some sort. Your groceries to a grocery store, they may come train, ship, whatever, but eventually they're going to come out. So, there was some talk on that. And one, it's, uh, I'm just going to talk very briefly about, there were some commissioners, and I think this was the fourth meeting, I'd been in, third or fourth meeting. And what's happened in the poultry industry now, and I love a good, I, I think this is my last meal, and they asked me what it was, I'd say, how about some fried chicken? I love fried chicken and it's not having to do with raising the chickens, it's having to do away with the carcasses and all that that's happening, and there's more and more chicken houses being built and more and more prospectively to be built. But in some of our counties, they started out putting this stuff in a, like a composter, then they will, then we're talking chicken parts, dead birds, whatever. Then they, they, uh, take it out and they spray it. People pay them to come spray it, I mean, they pay you to spray it, uh, on your, and the smell radius is three miles. Flies are eating these people up. The smell is killing them if they can sit on their porch. And they just wanted other counties to be aware that if there's anything you can do to stop this. So, I'm just making us aware of it now because the more and more this happens, they've got to find the most feasible way they can to get rid of their losses. If it was a fire on a chicken house or it was a chicken, a bird flu, and they had to get rid of sixty thousand or a hundred thousand chickens, that's what they're doing. And there are different ways, composting is one of them. So, these people have come and just trying to put everybody, and these are commissioners and people from those counties that are saying, you don't want this coming to your county and if there's anything you can do. Uh, so I don't know what we can do, Ted and I talked about it. Uh, but someday it comes here and we would just have to be ready for it because it falls under the Department of Agriculture. And that is the broadest department probably in the state. So, uh, hopefully it never comes here, but if it does, I guess we're just warned, is all I can say. And that's it.
Okay. Mr. Raff.
Well, I just wanted to start with, um, you know, that I agree that there's more people out there. Um, there's been a lot of, um, accidents on lookout, um, so please drive slow, watch, watch other people, stay in your lanes, be careful. Um, there's been some really bad car accidents up there and it's, it's pretty scary. Um, in my report, it, this will be towards more of the end of August. Um, the computers were not, uh, calculating properly for a little bit. So, um, scale, uh, numbers are eight oh six and dumpster numbers are one oh, one sixty-four. And that's a total of nine seventy, which is up there this month. And, uh, three, three forty-one on the work orders. Just a lot of roadwork, different, uh, they've been working on the streets, so there hasn't been as many, uh, work orders as usual.
Okay. All right, your report. Uh, I'll start with, um, I want to mention yesterday, uh, well, day before yesterday, we went to Atlanta, was it yesterday? Tuesday, Tuesday, day before. Um, we went, Robert and I went down, uh, this was a, a planned event for the last month or so. Uh, and it was, um, it was actually in recognition of, uh, of Tommy Bradford. And Tommy, you know, I talked about this a little bit on radio, but, you know, Tommy was our, our major, uh, back, uh, when he had the accident or actually was involved in this, uh, uh, this, uh, incident. Uh, we were, he was hit by a vehicle in a chase, uh, down south of Trenton here. They were, uh, chasing this lady from, uh, out of Alabama. And, um, he put these spikes down, uh, he was actually hit and he lost his leg, uh, his left leg. And, uh, what this was about, you know, what, you know, he was honored and actually, um, you know, um, given a presentation and.
Spirit award.
A spirit award is, is what they call it, but it was just a, uh, it was amazing. Uh, we didn't really realize how big it was when we got there and how many people was involved in this. But, uh, it's actually Workman's Comp, State Workman's Comp Board. And it's very highly unusual for a person to go through what Tommy went through, uh, and injuries of the same. And, um, and actually choose to come back to work, uh, you know? And, uh, and he, he, he did that and, uh, it was, um, it's just amazing because he, um, you know, once you do that, once you sign that over, you know, you're, you know, you better be sure that you're, you're, you're doing the right thing because it's, you know, it's pretty permanent, you know? And Tommy, uh, he's, he devoted all of his young life to this county and he'll about, and I'm sure you, you, you've got a lot that you'll see Tommy do in this county as he grows older. Um, Tommy's in his, um, he's in his, I guess, forties, isn't he? Forty-eight, forty-seven, something like that, I think, you know, I did, and I've known him since he was a little kid. And, and, uh, he's, um, that shows right there the dedication he's got, not just to the sheriff's department, but to Dade County. Because, um, honestly, he would not have ever had to work. I mean, he was, you know, I mean, in, in reality, and that's what was so amazing, you know? And to hear that, uh, go through and hear the story, we had, now, they had everyone there, had to, they had his, uh, caseworkers, uh, that worked with him from day one. They had the attorneys, ACCG was there, their, uh, representatives. Uh, and, uh, so it was, uh, it was, it was something, it was, it was really, um, that was really an amazing, uh, trip that we went on. And, and, and it was, uh, but I just want to mention that. And if you see Tommy, pat him on the back because it's, it's just, um, it was a good, it was an honor, you know? But, um, anyway, that, I just wanted to mention that. Uh, another thing, you know, moving on, um, way off this subject, but I want to, I want to kind of thank the railroad, they're, they're kind of working with us now. If you've noticed, we've got, I've mentioned this every, every meeting and it's all been negative, but, uh, they are kind of come, getting on board with us on these trains here in Trenton anyway. Uh, if you notice, you went down to, uh, across railroad track, they are parking the cars there, but they are breaking them now. Uh, one of the crossings still has a cross on it, there's nothing to do about that. Um, you know, but it is open. I, I don't know whether maybe tonight or tomorrow, they may fix it where they can raise it because it's not, it's not safe because people pull up and the first thing they want to do is they look to see if a train's coming, they go around the side on them, so hopefully they can fix that. But anyway, but we still have issues on the north end. Uh, Lamar has been involved there, uh, this month. I've been, uh, I've been, had several calls. The train is still, you know, leaving these people, you know, stranded there for, you know, from two to four hours at a time. And, um, so, but we're working on it and I want those people out there that's watching to keep up with it. We're doing everything we can on our, on our government level here. And, uh, we do have the federal people involved in it, uh, the actual, uh, our congressmen and all, they're, they're working on it. So, hopefully we can reach some type of a, a medium on it, I don't know. But we, but at least we've got some positives to, to report. Um, the, uh, uh, let's see here, I want, I want to actually mention, I know Lamar and I, we talked about this last month. Uh, I've, I've talked to these people, uh, a few times here in the last few weeks. And actually, I was on the phone with them just before we came in. This is on the fiber, we mentioned, uh, that actually fixing to be, uh, installed up in Lamar and, uh, in his district. Um, they are about two to three weeks out from actually hitting the ground, actually, you know, doing, actually beginning. Um, they said everything looks real good. Uh, they also, the phone companies, uh, authorized them to go ahead. And, uh, they're actually doing all the, uh, the engineering and all on the west side of the interstate, uh, which is over in Hooker area. So, that's just the beginning of it. And we do have a, a mouth of it, if anyone wants to see it, it shows you kind of, it's, it's actually beginning up on, uh, up on Steel Road and, um, on Gwin, uh, Gwen Road, and it turns into Steel Road. And, uh, so that's, that's the beginning and then they'll move, it'll, it'll move this way, you know? So, um, you know, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. And I just want to thank, you know, the phone company, Adam Austin, he's, uh, he's been great. He's, uh, he's kind of the, um, go-to person there at the phone company. And, um, they are, they're, um, have be, have began, begun the project. They received the money, uh, well, the grant was let down several months ago. And some people, I know some kinds of know that got the money, they're still kind of sitting on it, they haven't really started. But our phone company, they, they're, they know the need and, uh, uh, so they've actually, I want to commend them for getting, you know, making, you're making it happen, you know? But we've talked about this for two years, I mean, you know, and so hopefully, you know, uh, you know, hopefully it's about, it's going to be probably about a year, two-year project to actually hit everything, you know? But, um, it's just, um, it's a good day, you know? I know it's a good day. And we'll, Lamar and I both, we, we said at every commission meeting, uh, myself or Lamar, we'll give you kind of an update on where they stand at and kind of where they're at in the north end. And then as they move into other parts, like in Philip's district, we'll do the same thing out there to keep everybody, you know, informed on. And I'm looking at that too, excuse me. All right. Um, let me see here, we've got, um, let me think here. Burke Alter mentioned that last week, I've had, uh, a few calls about that. We do have signs up there now, uh, that actually, we had some, um, um, issues on the right away coming up and down, uh, protruding out on the right away, those people are supposed to be handling that. Uh, we did, we have posted some signs up there, uh, about, you know, parking on the, on the side of the road on the right way. Because there's a lot of houses, you don't realize, but there's been a lot of activity off the side of the mountain, uh, on the, yeah, on the west side of the mountain there. And, um, a lot of people have been, there've been cars parked up there and all. But we're handling that so the people on Lookout Mountain, you know, we're, we're, we're working on that. And it's supposed to be, uh, that's going to improve. Uh, Murphy Hollow, Lamar gave a report on that. That's, uh, like he said, you know, we're about two weeks, I think, two and a half weeks out. Uh, hopefully we get back on that, but if you've not been over there, uh, it really, really looks good. And, uh, also, uh, they did finish the, uh, the loop over there going from, uh, around Sales Lane. And that looks really good. Uh, we would probably go on, I don't know what we're going, we want to repost it because we're already having complaints with people speeding, you know, because it is, it looks like a racetrack, you know, and that looks really nice. And we've got a lot of young people and old people too that, that, you know, that don't, uh, don't think about it. But, uh, we will in the, in the near future, um, you know, we'll, we'll post, we'll post it, repost it with speed limit. And, um, and, uh, hopefully the sheriff, you know, I think he'll work with us on it and try to patrol it more because it is a, a slick road and, and it is, it can be dangerous, you know? So, uh, we, I do want to mention this too, the, uh, the actual fundraiser, the barbecue, they've been doing this for many, many years. I've done it South Dade, Rising Pond, there's a banner across Highway eleven there, you can't miss it when you go to Rising Pond. Uh, this is Saturday, September the third, it's, uh, it's after more. And, um, they'll, uh, they'll actually start serving, uh, usually, usually they start around eleven o'clock or so. Uh, but, uh, and they'll serve till they run out, but they run out every year. So, you know, and it's really, it's really good barbecue, they have chicken and pork. And, uh, you can buy it by the pound, uh, or sandwiches, uh, or, or plates. And, uh, five dollars for children, seven dollars for adults and eight dollars a pound. But it's, it's worth going down there, if you've never been down there, or if you happen to be a new person here, you ought to try it out, it's, it's worth going. And it, it benefits our fire department, that's, that's their, one of their big, their big fundraisers. Also, we're having this year, uh, it's, um, and the sheriff's, sheriff's department is supporting this, uh, Smoke on the Square. Uh, that's September the tenth, it's. That's September the tenth, it's, you know, and it starts at ten and goes through to four o'clock, through the day. All these proceeds here will go to the Hope House, which is over on one thirty-sixth. And it's, it's really a good event, they had it, last year was the first year and there was a lot of people, a lot of people there, a lot of vendors and, and so it's, it's well worth, well worth going to. So it'll be a special day, make sure I'm not leaving anything out here. The bridge over to high school. Still, that is, we got a little bit of date on that the other day, on the replacement of it, and it's still going to hit. You won't see any real work start probably till twenty twenty-four, which is, you know, out there, but it'll be here before you know it. But there's still a lot of work, a lot of engineering work going on because of, they're trying to make their mind up exactly, exactly how they're going to do the traffic, how they're going to take care of it. So we'll, we'll give you an update maybe over the meeting on that to keep you, because that's, that's going to be a big deal, especially people live on lookout and in the Pioneer area coming into Dade County. So y'all got anything else y'all want to mention? Okay, all right, we'll move on then. Mindy, are you here? Ms. Mindy Hayworth, she's our manager of our Dade County Public Library, she, she'll do her first report.
Thanks so much for having me. I had to, I was a little late today, as a lot of people are experiencing, we are short-staffed at the library, so I had to stay till we closed today. But I appreciate always y'all giving me a chance to highlight what's happening at the library. First and foremost, we had this beautiful bookshelves built for the history room. The Dade County Historical Society paid for the bookshelves. I have to brag a little bit, my son built them, he's a carpenter and he gave them a bid that they were happy with, so he finished those bookshelves. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see what they were built for, designed specifically to hold all of the bound copies of the Dade County Sentinel. They're just really heavy and hard to pull in and out, so we're, they basically run all along the windows in there and they look really great. So the Historical Society was really happy, I think they'd been, they had an estimate on these shelves three years ago and they've been waiting that long to finally get them. So we're real excited that they're done. And next, I want to talk about some new programming at the library. First, we've got yoga for seniors, that's going to be next Wednesday, we've already got four people signed up. It's free as usual, we are asking folks to call the library and register with us so we know how many to expect. My mats came in today, yay, we ordered some yoga mats and they just got, they arrived today. So if you have your own mat, bring one, otherwise we have one for you. And she's going to work on chair yoga or on the mat, so we're really excited to be able to offer that. She's also going to do yoga for homeschool families later in the month. So we have a very large homeschooling population in Dade County. It was brought into focus at the library when four H had a homeschool meeting at the library, they needed to use our meeting room. And I was like, my goodness, we do have a lot of homeschool families come in the library. Anyway, we coordinated a little bit to try to figure out a good time, day and time to have it, so we're excited that we're going to be, it's going to be, you know, moms, dads, kids, all ages, we're excited about that. And Discover Trails, this is my personal pet project, I'm so excited. I've mentioned before that I love the trails of Dade County, I think they're sort of a hidden gem that a lot of people don't really understand. Everybody knows Cloudland Canyon, well, there's this great series of trails called the Cloudland Canyon Connector Trail System. They run all the way from Cloudland Canyon to Lula Lake. So what I'm going to be offering is a three-month series, on the Thursday night, you come to the library and I'm going to present information. I've got apps for your phone, I've got maps, sort of break down those barriers of actually, where do I park? What do I do? How do I, how do I not get lost if I'm going out there? So we're going to have an info session on the Thursday and then the following Saturday, there will be a guided hike by one of the naturalists at Cloudland Canyon that will meet you at the trailhead. And I will be there for the hike as well, but they're actually going to lead us. And we're, we're increasing, the first one's going to be a one-mile hike, second one's going to be a one, one point seven five mile hike, and the last one's going to be a little bit over three. So I'm really excited to sort of bring that into focus. It is a five-dollar parking fee for any of the trailheads, or you can get a state park pass, which is what I have. It's fifty-five dollars for the year for a car and that gets you into any state park in the state of Georgia. So I would encourage anybody to go ahead and support the state parks. A lot of people don't know this about the state parks in Georgia, but when COVID hit and the safest place to be was outside, Georgia was one of the only places that kept its state parks open for people to use. Tennessee did not. So somebody who's an avid trail runner, I'm always on the trails, I saw such an influx of people coming to Georgia because it was a safe place to be. I know y'all have to deal with a lot of those parking issues, but, you know, I always encourage people to support them for one of the reasons that they really were thinking and trying to make sure.
Those beautiful parks.
Successibility. And we also have a coding for kids workshop starting up this month. It's Scratch, which is a coding program, it's actually going to be led by one of our team volunteers in coordination with Spencer, our youth education coordinator. So basically it's geared towards ages eight and nine, but come on down and learn to code at our Scratch workshop. The other thing I want to just highlight again, I've mentioned it before, but I've noticed a lot of the high schoolers are needing Chromebooks at home to finish up their homework. Keep going. And I just wanted to reiterate, the library has Chromebooks and hotspots that you can check out for two weeks. Because we saw an increased need, we got six more added to our collection this week that are available. And we were part of a federal grant that was, that purchased a bunch of Chromebooks for our region of the libraries. And the second half of those are going to be delivered within this month, so we will have twelve more, which would put our total up to, we've got ten, twenty-two, close to thirty Chromebooks we can lend out. And you can check them out for two weeks with one renewal unless there's a waiting list. Parents will have to sign off if the child's under eighteen, just, you know, because they're a little bit more expensive. But we've had great success, nothing but good things about the folks that have checked them out. Right now, we only have two available until we got the six that just came in because they were so popular. And finally, I just, I don't have a slide for this, but I just wanted to remind y'all that we have a poster printing service and we print out beautiful posters. Ms. Carrie, she ordered some from the library, she sent me the files via email. I had another young person who was presenting at the Plumnelli Art Fair, she needed a poster for her table, she sent us the file digitally. We were able to get it printed up and ready for her to pick up. So please think about us if you are interested in having a poster printed. And I hope I.
Or birthday cards, or birthday cards.
Or birthday cards, yeah, we printed some birthday posters out, you know, we can do it all, so just give us a call, let us know. And I'm hoping I kept it under five minutes.
Doing great.
I'm working, I'm working on that, are there any questions?
Any questions? Good job, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Mrs. Laura Beth Cunningham.
Well. Um, August was a pretty big month for us, we have, I have kind of gone back into the schools, I've been having all my meetings with the principals and the teachers that I'm going to go into their classrooms. We have every fifth grade set up for meetings through the end of the year. And then since it's my first year coming in, I'm only doing fifth grade until Christmas and then I'm going to try to pick up third and fourth afterwards. We'll see how that goes, it's a lot of kids. We will start focusing on our project achievement where all the kids are going to give their little presentations with their visual aids. And then hopefully some of them will want to go to competition. One of the things that we put out was this flyer, just, it's like a snapshot, the previous one is like a snapshot of what we're, we've really started offering. So all the kids are going to get a copy of that and then they're also going to get a copy of our newsletter. I try to keep the newsletter going when school is in session, so they always know what's going to be happening that next month if they want to participate. It's that one right there. We had a very successful August homeschoolers meeting, like Mindy said, we were getting our new air conditioners installed, which we are so thankful for. So we had that lesson over at the library and we had over thirty people there. I taught a lesson on like basic food preservation for that particular age group. And then we smashed up a bunch of strawberries and we made some freezer jam and all the kids got to take home about a three-ounce jar of freezer jam. The next homeschoolers meeting is going to be next week on the seventh and it will be back at the Ag Center. And I'm going to teach them a little science lesson about buoyancy and, and volume and all of that wonderful stuff. That they're probably not going to find as fun as the strawberry jam, but I've got to throw the educational stuff in there every once in a while. August was definitely the biggest attendance month for a lot of my programs. You know, for my craft night, I've had, you know, between eight and ten kids, this last, last craft night, I had over twenty show up. Which was awesome, but very unexpected. One of the, the little girl here on the bottom, she traveled all the way from Jasper, Tennessee to come to the craft night. So I don't know how she heard about it, but she is coming now and they're going to also start attending our homeschoolers meeting. So her mom's going to bring her from Jasper like twice a month for this stuff. But they had a good time, we got squirt guns, we made watercolor paintings with them and, and they had a good time doing that. The next craft night is going to be the twenty-third and we are going to make little turtles out of our star form bows. Some members of our Dade County Livestock Team traveled to Multree, Georgia to show at the CCA FFA Lamb and Goat Classic. Callie and Ella Hughes had a really good show with lots of prizes. Callie got the fourth grade showmanship champion and overall junior division showmanship champion. And she also had the fifth overall Georgia born and bred weather. Ella was the seventh grade showmanship champion, the grand champion Georgia born and bred, fourth overall weather and third overall Georgia bred and born doe. This weekend, we are hosting our huge state of Dade Lamb and Goat Classic. We currently have about two hundred lambs and goats registered by exhibitors from five straight states across the southeast. We expect this to be another big event, it brings a lot of people into the county, so hopefully our businesses are really going to benefit from that. We invite everybody to stop by and check it out, it's a very interesting thing. On Saturday, we have what they call like a stockman show. And, and that's where the kids like put their goats up on the table and they fit them and they get judged on how they do it. So it's not just, you know, people professionally coming in and fitting the goats, the kids have to do it. So I think that's a really great thing. And then on Saturday, on Sunday, we'll have our, like, actual classes. Last month, the Dade Greater Gardener class met and our guest speaker, Josh Butter from Cherokee County, presented on planning the fruit orchard. Our September meeting is going to be on Thursday, September twenty-ninth at six P M. And Josh will be back and he is going to continue the fruit tree lesson on maintenance pruning and pest management. The next Tri-State Beekeepers Association meeting will be on Monday, September ninth, and the meeting will be held at a local beekeeper's place. If you are familiar with the beekeepers group, they ask that you contact them directly and they'll give you all the details on that. The next Tri-State Catamounts Association meeting will be the annual Pen Heifer Show and it will be held at the Walker County Ag Center on Tuesday, September twentieth. Any producers wanting to participate need to R S B P to either the Extension Office here or in Walker County by Friday, September ninth, so let us know. They plan to bring a pen, a pen of heifers. This year, they are going to allow those breeders, if they want to have those heifers for sale, they will be for sale, that's kind of new. Not all breeders are going to choose to do that, but there will be some heifers for sale there. And if you're wanting to have the meal, just R S B P, so they'll have a meal for you.
Good report, any questions? Okay, thank you, good, good report, good report. Come on up, George. We have a paint hitter tonight, you know, we got, George is not here tonight, George Williams.
He can be all places all the time.
That's, that's true, that's true.
Basically John Rollins, Alliance for Dade, Chamber Commerce Vice Chair. And basically just presenting for, for George, she sent me all the information, so, next slide. We're at a hundred and three investors, which is pretty stable, we, we get some in, we lose some, but we're, we're stable. We do have some things coming up on a slide, we've got a, we've had the Plumnelli Depot Art Show. We had twenty-five local artists participating, three hundred and seventy-five guest slots, of good things in there, lots of artwork sold. Working on bids for replacing highway directional signs for the visitor and welcome center, trying to up the traffic that we get there. Job Ready Dade Job Fair is coming up, September twenty-fourth, Dade County High School, Friday night after hours. We're having an event at the Southeast Limans Training Center Thursday, October twenty-seventh. And then the Dade Expo coming up, Jolly Holidays, the Saturday after Thanksgiving at Dade County High School, selling local crafts. And then our visitors coming into the welcome center are, that's what we've got for this month. Basically, we've got nine Dade residents came in, we got a lot of visitors this month from out of, out of the area and twenty-one phone calls answered. And I think the next slide is where we've got the good news, which is we've hired a president and C E O there of the chamber. And that's Sandy White, she'll be joining the Alliance on October twenty-fourth, it gives us a full-time person to support local business, Dade County Chamber Commerce, Alliance for Dade. Also got Margot, Margot McDade and she comes in September fifth and that's replacing Titus. And he'll be the director, she'll be the director of tourism.
She's, is she from Alaska, is that the one that's from?
I think that's Ms. White.
Okay.
Is from Alaska.
I know one of them, they said, they actually came from Alaska, a big move.
Yeah, and I think she was from here originally and moving back to the area and she's very familiar with Chamber Commerce, tourism type activities and generating interest in those. Got questions?
Sounds good.
Good job.
Wonderful, thank you.
At, at the event, it's a lineman's game, what, what does that consist of, do you know?
Honest, I do not at this point, no.
But is it, is it open to the public, is it?
I'm saying if it's on here, it's going to be open to the public.
That's what I was thinking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Maybe going to teach everybody to climb a pole too. Kind of like the hang glider, you know. All right, Audrey's not here tonight, she actually, do we have anyone else from the Historical Society? Oh, let's move down to number five, A, monthly financial report. And Carrie, you want to go ahead and do what you can do on it, I mean, go over what you've got.
I will.
With Dawn and Becca.
So on the Dade County Account Balance Report as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, the balances are as follows, the general fund is a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Federal Asset Fund is at zero dollars, Sheriff's Special Fund, eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The Drug Abuse Education Fund is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. Supplemental Juvenile Service Fund, twenty-eight thousand, ninety-four dollars. Victim Assistance Fund, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The Jail Fund sits at thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. The Federal Assets Fund is at zero dollars. The ARPA Fund, the American Rescue Plan, is at two million, four hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. The Hotel Motel Accommodations Tax is at a hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-one. Employees' Flexible Spending is at five thousand, four hundred and forty-six. And the Payroll Account is at eighty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five. Moving on to the next page, we have the Dade County Income Statement as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And in the General Fund for the Income Statement ending June thirtieth, the actual revenue collected was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, one hundred, sorry, eight hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We budgeted one million, seven hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, so we're under by eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars. Year to date, we collected thirteen million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and three dollars, budgeted thirteen million, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And had an excess of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and three dollars. On the next page, you see the Dade County Income Statement as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And on the General Fund Balance Sheet, the actual budget sits at one million, fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. The monthly budget at one million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand and one dollars. We are under by sixty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The year to date for twenty twenty- The year-to-date for 2022 is $12,821,319, and the year-to-date budget is at $13,309,000, leaving us under by $487,680, with a percentage of 96.34. The budget is attained at 100%, revenues attained at 100%, and expenses attained at 96.34%. After that, we'll move on to the local option sales tax revenue report for August. That collection was $252,572. For special purpose local option sales tax revenue for August, we collected $315,715. You will see the next several slides are split, two reports followed by some detailed reports, and then out on the last page, you'll see the Dade County Tax Commissioner's Office year-to-date tax collections for FY 2023. The revenue so far is $97,710, budgeted is $5,495,500, leaving a remainder of $5,397,789, with a percentage collected so far of 1.78%. And that concludes the report.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? If not, I'll return a motion to approve our financial report as presented. I have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the financial report.
Mr. Lowry, have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Goff, thank you, I'll vote. Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Tartline.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you. Robin, you got anything you need to go with, I mean, any legal matters or, okay, new, new business, we've pretty much covered everything today, I mean, I mean tonight, anything that might possibly be listed as new. The reading of the minutes of the last regular meeting, and any special call meetings will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished, copies in advance. The minutes for public record are available for review in the commission office. The minutes are included in our consent agenda. At this time, I would ask Carrie to go work in consent agenda, and I'll, if you have any kind of motion pertaining to that.
Okay. We have the approval of the agenda as presented, the approval of the previous meeting minutes from August, as well as the review of the personal status report, the board appointments and the proclamations, the resolution R-29-22, the appointment, the recommendation to appoint George Williams to the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission Board to fill, fulfill the unexpired term ending December 31st, '22, the proclamation of National Library Card Signup Month, the proclamation of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and the proclamation of Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, September 18th through the 24th. We have the approval of ARPA expenditure for the use of ARPA funds to upgrade the current licensing and hardware for the E911 system in the amount of $29,456.45 to Sound Communications Incorporated. We also have the adoption of resolution R-53-22 to accept part of Castle Drive and Air Castle Drive as county roads and made part of the county road system. We also have the Board of Commissioners official request to the Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts Sales Ratio Study to be appealed, as well as the signing of the contribution agreement between GACD and the Dade County Board of Commissioners, Resolution R-52-22 to approve the grant for Georgia Association of Conservation District Contribution Agreement, GACD-02-22-022, in a total of $32,000 to pay for an employee for soil conservation. And lastly, we have Resolution R-51-22, the Amendment Number 1 to physical year 2022 budget for an overall change of $135,000. This concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions, changes? She covered everything, did she, Robin? I know you were kinda helping, y'all were working together on that, okay?
Right, I hope so.
Sounded everything, okay? Okay, if there's no, no comment, I'll return a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented, I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, have a, have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bradford, thank you. Have a motion, a second, I'll call a vote. Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Tartline.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, thank you. Okay, no executive session tonight. Do y'all got anything else you wanna add to the meeting?
No, I just appreciate the people of our county, our volunteers.
Yep, no doubt, it's a good place, a place to live.
Directors, administrators, what you call it, but y'all do a great job. Great county to live in because of what everybody does together as a team, so we, we all appreciate it.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll return a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
Second.
And call a vote. Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Tartline.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Adjourn, thank you, all of you for being here tonight.
I did that.
What is wrong with my mouse? There is no-